Good evening, everyone. My name is Yvette Woodruff. I'm the Policy Chair. I would like to call to order the Oakland County Network Committee of a whole meeting. Ms. Linging Selter, will you do roll call?
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Furman.
Present.
Dr. Giles. Pastor Jones.
Present.
Ms. Woodruff.
Here.
Uh, Dr. Hans. Ms. Newman.
Here.
Ms. Root. Ms. May. Mr. Torres. And Mr. Cowan.
Here.
We have six.
We have, out of eleven.
Okay, oh yeah.
Yeah, because we're, yeah, we're, we're short, we're short one right now, so we do have a quorum.
So, we have a quorum.
All right.
We've come to the first opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone online?
If you are online and wish to speak to public comment, please raise your hand at this time.
Anyone in the room? Okay. Uh, moving on to approval of agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
It's been properly moved and supported. Hearing no opposition. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No discussion. The motion carries. We will now turn it over to John Young for the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Our first order of business is we need to appoint a Vice Chair. And if he is interested, I'd like to nominate Pastor Jones for that role.
Are you interested?
Who do you, who do we, do you have quorum for the?
Yeah.
What's your third?
Adam, me and Patrick.
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry. Support.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, we have support. I think we need a roll call for, is that correct? For your Finance Chair.
Just the Finance Committee, right?
Just the, yeah.
All right. Mr. Furman.
Yes.
Dr. Giles. Uh, Mr. Young?
Yes.
Pastor Jones. Did you get the vote in?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, now for item B, Financial Update for June 2024. Patrick Franklin, can you, uh, walk us through this, please?
Start with the revenue, revenue page, the first page of our packet. This is the last month that we're receiving revenue based on eligibles for, um, the trend that was determined by MDHHS and Milliman and eligible trend. And so, um, for the last three months, which is July, August, and September, we'll be, um, you know, capping out the eligibles at the Ju- July or the June, um, rate for the remainder of the year. So as you see, um, the eligible trend, the revenue did go down based on the eligibles for the month of June. Um, it's supposed to be the lowest base that those, uh, that trend will go for the remainder of the fiscal year. And so, we're seeing the results of what, um, was determined back in April, that they would fund, fund us based on, for the fa- last six months, um, based on a lookback period and an additional, um, um, acuity factor, um, while they were still considering the, um, eligible trend. So now, for the last three months, we should see that level off for the remainder of the last three months. For next slide, eligibles talks about, um, it shows the, the trend from June. As you know, there's still redem- redetermination being done to determine, you know, how, um, DAB versus TANF and, um, Healthy Michigan persons are in the right category. And so that's still being determined, but these are the total eligibles that we have through June. And that number should, um, you should see a steady number for the rest of the remainder of the year. There should not be any more decline in the number of eligibles. It's a matter of just getting them properly in the right, uh, categories. The next slide, um, we're looking at assets. Um, as you can see, um, cash and investment is down about eight million from last month, uh, actually from the, um, year-to-date, I'm sorry. Um, receivables are up. Um, and so, there's a decrease in cash and investment, but receivable is up by six, um, roughly six million. Other assets remain consistent and capital assets. We know that's just, uh, basically the depreciation from month to month in our, um, for the building and assets that are, that's owned by the organization. One of the things that's, let's go to the next slide. Liabilities, um, they remain consistent. And, um, vendor payables are, uh, up about a million dollars roughly. Due to State is what I wanted to focus on, because that's where our variance really comes into play. And that Due to State is a timing issue. Um, it shows that we are paying, that we're receiving more revenue than we actually pay out in expenses. And we know that not to be true. And it's just a timing issue of when the expenses are reported in our financials to properly reflect the timing of when they, uh, revenue matches that expense. So you'll see that kind of, uh, offset next month. Um, it should offset that number. I believe there was a Due to the State of about five million dollars, uh, based on our financials, um, amount of revenue we receive versus the amount of expenses that we, uh, reported. So that's a timing, uh, timing issue. Employee payables kind of remain constant. Uh, long-term debt also is a result of, um, depreciation in, um, in some of the bonds that we hold on our buildings. The bond debt, debt that we have in the, it's also showing a, a decrease, which it should over time, because we're paying it down. And then overall, it shows a total net position. Total assets are down about four million, uh, year-to-date. And then total liabilities are up, um, as well, by about four or five million as well. Um, total net position, as you see, uh, the net position went down by about nine million, which is the results of the asset and liability totals. Um, a lot of that has to do with what I just mentioned about the settlement that's reflected in these financials that show that, um, which should reverse itself out during the next, um, reporting cycle. As you can see, um, that did make an impact on the overall net position, and that's why I wanted to make sure I made that perfectly clear of what that, um, was attributed to and what was reflective in that total. Revenue on the next page. We're, um, in the process of preparing for you a budget amendment for, uh, next, next month that will reflect, uh, what revenues we actually receive compared to what we have projected to receive. And we noticed that there was an overstatement in our CCBA C revenue amount. And so, we do project that that revenue amount will come down in our next budget amendment that we present to you on, uh, next COW meeting. This is shows, uh, year-to-date, um, revenue comparison, um, from this time, June of 23 to June of 24. So it's a year-to-year comparison. And it shows, you would see that we received more revenue, um, in this fiscal year. However, we do, I wanted to make sure I noted that we do have to adjust that CCBA C total to reflect, uh, roughly 10 million less on that 329 total. State General Fund remains consistent. County funds are generally consistent year-to-year. And then all other is can, generally consistent. And so, that CCBA C number that we mentioned, uh, it flows through not just the, because it's a pass-through for us. We, we get that money, um, and we pass it through. So although our revenue will reflect a decrease, the expense will go down by that same amount. So it's really a net impact to the overall, um, net position. But I did want to bring that up, because as you can see, it, it, um, the bar charts show that it will reflect that we're receiving substantially more revenue when actually our budget amendment will reflect what we actually, um, our actual CCBA C dollar amount. Provider Network, um, it shows basically that we're still pushing out dollars at the rate that, um, right now, we're, when you saw the previous slide that showed, um, that we were receiving more revenue than we actually pay out, uh, we know that we're paying out more than we're receiving. And so, um, this, this slide, um, Provider Network will reflect, uh, the decrease in the CCBA C amount as well. So, I, I keep bringing that up, because it's affecting most of the graphs that we're looking at, that, um, adjustment that needs to happen during the next, uh, reporting period. Grants, we continue to get additional grants and additional dollars for grants compared to last year, but we know that it's just a, a pass-through for us. You know, we, we expense what we, uh, receive in revenue. So it's just basically, uh, we push that dollars out. We get more funding for rep, uh, grants, which helps to provide more services. However, we, as, we're just a pass-through for that. And, um, although it shows additional grant revenue, we know that when we, we just put, basically, push that money out in expenses. All other is basically consistent from year-to-year. Um, it shows all other revenue from June of 23 through June of 24. The net income, um, we're showing overall, um, an eight, 8.9 shortfall in this presentation from year-to-date compared to, um, last year's. Last year's comparison, we show 4.7 at this time. At this time, um, we're showing 8.9. And included in that is that adjustment that we're, we mentioned about the, um, cost settlement, which shows us paying more expenses, paying, receiving more revenue than expenses that we pay. And so, overall, um, it shows an increase from last month's financials. But I just, I wanted to make sure I pointed out some, um, things that attributed to, um, those items. And I know also, not included in this is the PA two dollars that we receive. Previously, we would have budgeted those as a 1/12th item or 1/12th receivable, but because we booked that as we receive it on a cash basis, um, it's something that we're going to get, but we haven't booked it yet. And we haven't received it, but we're expecting additional 2 point, I believe it's 3.6 million Also, you know, I know we're coming close up to the year-end, and I'm trying to project where we will actually land. Um, we're putting together some analytics to determine, um, some of our BA, will we present our BA two next month? And we'll be able to actually show what's still obligated and what we, um, the changes that incurred from during the fiscal year that we need to adjust the budget to reflect. And so, um, with that being said, uh, that's the end of my presentation. Are there any questions?
Let me open it up first, Finance Committee, then to the whole board. Okay. Yvette?
One question. Under, um, employee payables, is that like their time bank?
Yes. Employee payables, the, the liability that the company owe to PTO payout and for, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cowan.
Thank you, Patrick. Um, just so we get this right, so the state now is going to reimburse us on Medicaid at the July 30th levels of enrollment through the rest of the year? Is that my, correct, is that the understanding?
For July, August, and September, they're going, eligible trend will not decrease below the June eligible numbers.
Okay. So, we, and we know what that number is.
We have it in June.
So we're gonna, we're able to forecast that on a revenue basis. Do, do we know, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask it. As the state said, I mean, they know, all of us are budgeting right now, the 10 networks in the state. Are they giving us any indication of what they think reimbursement rates are going to be in the next fiscal year?
Well, they provided some preliminary rates. Um, it's not entity-specific, so we're in the budgeting process. We have to use some estimates and some projections. And so, um, based off of FY '24, um, percentage of our share of the capitation, we can project, based on the rate that they've given us, because it's an aggregate total and not specific for entity. And so, we could come close to what, um, our share of the overall budget would be, but we haven't gotten specific rates with entity factors and all that, factor rate included in our, in our rates.
All right. Well, I know you'll be putting a budget together, so we, we at least have something to work with. It's not, it's not final, but we got something you can start to work with for-
That's correct.
-revenue projections.
And it's, it's not unusual to, after, upon receiving those rates, after the budget is presented, to have a, a quick amendment to show what changes, if any, if they're material enough, to present it again for amendment.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Patrick, uh, two questions. On the, on the grants, and this might be for you and others, are any of our grants, I mean, some grants sometimes have indirect cost to cover the administration of them. Are we, are we strictly pass-through, or are there any that kind of relieve some of the administrative burden?
So, um, a lot of our grants are, you know, they, they cover what the agreement lists. Some, some provide, um, staffing time for the persons performing the, the service.
Okay.
Um, there, sometimes it's a de minimis rate that organizations have. I don't think we have the de minimis rate, uh, associated with our grants. Probably something we need to start re-looking at and revisiting, because our grants are continually to grow. We thankful that we have people that's procuring these grant opportunities and receiving these additional funding, um, at a, at a, you know, large growth rate. Um, and so we need to look at that closer, so see how we can better, um, get administrative funding for the work that we're doing. It's good that we're doing the service, but, you know.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's always, it's, it's kind of a lagging indicator. I mean, you've got to have a number of grants, and then they start helping out a little bit. So I think it's just something for the future.
Yes.
Um, and can you remind the, the committee again on the eligibles? Um, it's a tiny category, but the CWP category.
As you're looking at, uh-
Back on the eligibles, we have the DAB, the TANF, Healthy Michigan. We've talked about all those, but the CWP is, while small, relatively new one.
Waiver, is that the, uh?
That was, that is children's?
Children's waiver, yes.
Right, everybody, I want, one person, just say it so we can, children's?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right. Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have one contractual obligation for over 100,000. This Civic Plus contract, is Chris here to present? Oh, there you are.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Chris McPatridge. I am the Director of Technology at OCHN. And we are here for approval of a Civics Plus, um, contract amendment to include an additional year for Civic, Civic Plus to administer our website and host our website. We will actually competitively bid this in fiscal year '25.
So, how long has this contract been in place? Is this?
This came into play in 2021. So we're ending a three-year contract. That would be effective December 1st. So we're looking to extend, sorry, November 30th. We're, we're looking to extend from December 1st of '24 to November 30th of '25.
Okay. All right. So, it's a check to the contract amendment. It's really an extension?
You know, I was a little unclear on some of the terminology. It sounded like a, an extension to me, and I was told it was an amendment to extend the contract, so.
Okay. So otherwise, it would end?
It would end November 30th of 2024.
Okay. Okay. So on the, the hosting part, I get the development. To what extent do they, I mean, would, if there's a new section added or pages added or what all goes?
Exactly. So if we want to refresh the website, you know, make changes to the website, that would be the development side of things, administration, you know, they actually host it and, and administer it from their site.
Okay. Do they provide any level of cybersecurity with this?
So that's something that we're looking at, talking to our HIPAA auditing company to include, um, to make sure that we're looking at our website as well, to ensure that it's safe from any cyber attacks, you know, any, any data mining, things that they could do to our, our website.
Okay. Questions from any of the Finance Committee members?
A question on that, um, we had some discussion, good afternoon.
Yep.
Uh, some discussion in relation to, um, OCHN as a whole, how we're promoting it, blah, blah, blah. And when I saw this, I was wondering, uh, will this company or yourself then come up with, um, ideas that would enhance the website, that would spread the great work that OCHN is doing?
Yeah, I would actually defer that to our amazing Communications Department, because they handle all of the, the skills and, and things that are necessary for that. I just put the infrastructure in place to make sure that they have the tools they need.
I have a, I have a-
So, I hate to defer that off to them, but they're the artistic side of things. Like I say, when I get my haircut, I'm like, you're the artist, so you do what you've got to do. Don't listen to me. I just brought it in here.
All right. And, and add on to that, with all of this discussion on AI and all, I'm just wondering how with this, we expand it or cover ourselves or maximize the opportunity that's done, you know, with the web.
Sure.
I'll let you answer the AI question.
Okay.
In terms of promoting ourselves and making our website as user-friendly as possible, yes, we are definitely doing all we can, and we work with the vendor to ensure that anything that we need to have updates or we need to have some sort of modifications, we work with them. But we, we do a lot of that in-house. We have a lot of very talented staff on the Communications Team who are really good at making sure that information is out there that's needed, having it highlighted and spotlighted. Um, but we're always open to any feedback, anything that you want to provide, we're happy to assist.
Yeah. And as it relates to AI, we know it's new, we know it's coming, we can't avoid it. Um, so we're starting to look at it, put some policies in place as it relates to AI, the use of it, um, not only from the provider side of things, um, when they want to use AI tools with us, um, but also what our policy is going to be using AI in OCHN.
Thank you. It's good to know we're ahead of the curve.
No.
Thank you.
So, um, yeah, uh, are there like, uh, search terms that are going to be used or meta tags or items kind of underneath it that they'll help with, or is that something your staff does?
Um, so we do have the accessibility tool on our website, and that does assist, um, individuals with any abilities that they need with that, that accessibility tool that is attached right to the website and available right on the, prominent on the front page.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions from other board members? Yes, Christine.
Just a little confused about the contract amount and then the not-to-exceed amount, um, because they're pretty different. So can you explain that a little bit more?
So my understanding was the original contract was, and I'm going to do very poorly at the math here, approximately 115,000 dollars, and we were adding an additional 14,000 dollars for the one-year extension, taking our not-to-exceed to 129.
For the total amount?
Yeah.
Okay, for all the years. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. The math worked, the, the categories don't, so good catch. Okay. Any other questions? If not, can I get a motion to recommend this for next week?
So moved. Support.
If we can do that, just voice vote, right. All those in favor by aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yvette, we are done with the Finance Committee. Back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Uh, next up is, um, Policy Committee. You could have saved this one.
Just brought my notes with me. Uh, it's my pleasure to bring you our annual, um, both Recovery Month and National Recovery Month and National Suicide Prevention Month proclamations. Um, as always, uh, we bring this to you each year. The, uh, this is the proclamation. I know it's very tiny on the screen. That is just for visual purposes. I'll be reading it to you as well. But as always, we will be emailing, um, mailing, mail mailing, as well as following up with our local cities, villages, and townships. our local cities, villages, and townships, as well as our school boards. This will be sent to the Board of Commissioners, as well as our faith-based community. We also are doing an additional outreach to our media contacts, trying to do a pitch about the proclamations that we do each year, and see if we can get some visibility with our proclamations through our media contacts. So, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation for Recovery Month, and we can pause for questions on that, and then we can move forward with the Suicide Prevention Month. National Recovery Month, September 2024.
Whereas-
According to the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, SAMSA, in 2022, seventeen point three percent of Americans, or forty-eight point seven million people twelve years or older, were classified as having a substance use disorder in the past year, including twenty-nine point five million people who were classified as having an alcohol use disorder, and twenty-seven point two million people who were classified as having a drug use disorder. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, over a hundred and seven thousand overdose deaths occurred in the United States in 2023, a three percent decrease from 2022. And whereas, substance use recovery is important for individuals' well-being, individual well-being and vitality, as well as for families, friends, communities, and businesses. And whereas, OCHN continues to educate and raise awareness of the risks and potential harm associated with prescription drug misuse. And whereas, stigma and stereotypes associated with substance use disorders often keep people from seeking treatment that could improve their quality of life. And whereas, substance use disorders occur when the recurrent use of alcohol and/or other drugs cause clinically or functionally significant impairment, such as health problems, disability, and failure to meet major responsibilities at work, school, or home. And whereas, substance use disorder recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people to live in a community of their choice while striving to achieve their full potential. And whereas, substance disorder recovery benefits individuals with substance use disorders by focusing on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to society, and enriches the community culture. And now, therefore be it resolved that Oakland Community Health Network hereby recognizes September 2024 as National Recovery Month. OCHN calls upon its individuals, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, faith-based organizations, and schools to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of substance use, and the need for appropriate and accessible services to promote recovery. Tom Helfer?
Oh, take a breath. Are there any questions, Policy Committee?
Just pointing out the S for recognize in the last paragraph, and the S recognizes. Right? Okay, yep, we will make that, okay. Sounds good, though. It all looks great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for that correction.
Okay. Is there a recommendation? Okay, any discussion? It's been properly moved and supported. Ms. Lingenselter, can you do a roll call?
Mr. Torres, Ms. May, Ms. Root?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Dr. Hans? Ms. Woodruff?
Yes. Motion carries.
All right.
Next slide, please. All right, simultaneously with the National Recovery Month, we will be also sending out the National Suicide Prevention Month proclamation, along with the same information that I mentioned earlier about Recovery Month. So, I will go ahead and read this proclamation. It's a little bit shorter, so. National Suicide Prevention Month, September 2024. Whereas, September is known as National Suicide Prevention Month, and is intended to help raise awareness surrounding suicide prevention resources available in the community. And whereas, World Suicide Prevention Day is observed each year on September 10. And whereas, suicidal thoughts can often affect anyone, regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas, according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, more than forty-eight thousand people died by suicide in 2021. And whereas, in 2021, suicide was among the top nine leading causes of death for people ages ten to sixty-four, and the second leading cause of death for people ages ten to fourteen and twenty to thirty-four. And whereas, organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, and National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, 988, work to help individuals in crisis and provide resources to shed light on this highly stigmatized topic. And whereas, every member of our community should understand that throughout lives, throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas, Oakland Community Health Network, OCHN, is committed to being a zero-suicide organization and cultivate a network of providers who are engaged in the zero-suicide policy, I'm sorry, philosophy. Now, therefore be it resolved that Oakland Community Health Network hereby recognizes September 2024 as National Suicide Prevention Month. OCHN calls upon our individuals, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, faith-based organizations, and schools to recommit our state to increase awareness and understanding of suicide prevention, and the need for appropriate and accessible services to assist individuals in crisis.
Thank you. Policy Committee, is there any questions or comments? Is there a recommendation to move to the full board? Ms. Lingenselter, can you do a roll call?
Ms. Root? Ms. Newman? Dr. Hans? Ms. Woodruff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Is Ms. Vicki Suter in the audience?
No, she's on vacation, but this is Angie O'Dowd.
Hi, Angie.
Hi, how are you?
I am well, thank you.
I am here today to present the application for a new REC member by the name of Hunter Parker. He has received unanimous votes to approve from the REC committee. So, we seek your approval.
And as we understand, he's previously served two years, so you're representing him to come back and serve the one year of his term?
Yes.
All right. Policy Committee, do you have any questions? Is there a recommendation to move this to the full board? Okay, it's been properly moved and supported. No other discussion? Ms. Lingenselter, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Root? Ms. Newman? Dr. Hans? Ms. Woodruff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. O'Dowd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now down to Other Business, and that will be our chair.
Thank you. As promised, the CEO Evaluation Committee met before this meeting to take into account the evaluation score summary that has been distributed to everyone this evening. All five members were present. As you may recall, this is a contractual item we have with our CEO. And based upon the reporting of the scoring of the eleven current board members, that fell into, I'll call it the mid-range category with a forty-five, and that fell into a category that, based upon the chart that we adopted with respect to performance awards and the salary increase, that fell in a six percent performance award and a three percent salary increase. That was adopted by the committee and is the recommendation by a four to one vote to the committee. We will present a memo to the board in the board packet that charts out the, you know, dollar amount and whatnot, but that is the same award as last year, that we did both on the salary and on the performance award. So, I did, we did want to give people time to think about it. It'll be on the board agenda next week for a vote. And like I said, we'll have a memo that will include the summary, which I think everyone got, we asked it to be handed out, and then we'll, I'll put, do a short memo that will put our action in writing, as well as have the corresponding dollar figures, so that everybody knows exactly what they're voting on. But that's the, we wanted to, we held off on making a recommendation until we had our meeting with the CEO, the board did, and had a chance to review all the board members' comments and take all that into consideration. So, that is my report on that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Under Other Business, we have Events Outreach. Ms. Weiner?
I'm a frequent flyer today. Hello again. Just outline a few, well, not a few, we have been very busy this month, and we are set to be very busy next month as well. Lots of wonderful events. Last week ended up being quite busy, we had quite a few events. We had a lot of faith-based type of programs that we attended, the Church in the Park at, New Birth International Church, and I think that is with Melchiah, Caitlin was there with Melchiah. Sounds like it was a great day, just a little wet. And then, there was also Stop the Violence Peace March that happened, and I, we had some representation from our board, as well as our staff there as well. I want to mention really quick the OU Med Students Speed Dating Event. I was at that event, and it was such a phenomenal event to see our young medical professionals who are up and coming, and they were very intrigued and very interested to hear all about OCHN. And, you know, we are actually going to be back at OCHN, or I'm sorry, at OU in October for a resource fair, so I'm hoping many of them will come back and visit us as well. We have some trainings coming up, as well as lots of events at some of our local markets. Next slide, please. We are also working really closely with Oakland County Parks, a lot of their abilities, events that we are participating in, and we have a table, so really trying to get the message out there about OCHN and the services that we have to offer. We also had, over the weekend, there were three different events going on, so it was quite busy over the weekend. Our staff is really getting the message out there with a couple of walks and wellness fairs, as well as through Oakland Schools. I'm excited to say that our annual Your Voice, Your Value Conference is this Thursday. We hope that you can join us. It is such a great event to honor individuals, those that we serve, who are both, have achievement, our peer awards will be honored that day, so we hope that you can join us. We'll be here in the Michigan room. The event's from nine to twelve. There'll be food, so please join us. Also, some back-to-school events, as you know, that's obviously going to be ramping up, and it's a good opportunity for us to seek out the different quadrants of the county, so that we are providing those resources at different quadrants of the county. That is, one of our objectives is to make sure we provide resources in those specific areas, so this is really helping us to achieve those goals and objectives and get the information out to our families. Next slide, please. As you can see, we've got some other events that are coming up. That event is actually on August the nineteenth, the Breastfeeding Gap. We have events, so we're working with our young moms and trying to get information out to our young moms, so that they're aware of the services and information that we have available, as well as trying to continue to work with the Rochester Hills community and be present in that community and attend different events and different venues. This is a youth council meeting that's coming up in September. Moving on, we have a lot of events, the next slide. A lot of events coming up in September. One thing I do want to note, we have our Vets event that we host each year, the past few years, in Medicine Heights, and that's shaping up to be a very busy event. We're almost full in terms of participants, and we're completely full in terms of vendor tables. We also have the Walk a Mile in Your Shoes, this is our annual event, it's actually the twentieth year for Walk a Mile. That date, we just learned today that that date is probably changing, so I'll keep you posted on what date that will be. It will either be September the seventeenth or the twenty-fifth. There was a little conflict at the Capitol, so that will be forthcoming. As well as, we have our NAMI Walk, which is coming up on the twenty-first, and we're down at Wayne State. Also, I forgot to include the Recovery Celebration. We have our annual Recovery Celebration here in the parking lot. It's a large event with, we have a great performer coming out, we have lots of great speakers, food and entertainment for our recovery community, and that is going to be on September the twentieth, so you'll hear more about that next month. Next slide. I wanted to mention some of the press releases. You may have heard or may have seen it, we have our new Access Director. We're excited that we are able to promote within, Tridina Taylor, as well as outlining our achievement of receiving the Mental Health America Bell Seal Award, and we'll be highlighting our Year of Voice, Your Value winners, our Achievement and Peer Award winners. Just wanted to keep this on here, we have our ongoing advertising that is available, and the radio on billboards, bus ads, cable, mall, radio, television. We also, our SUD Director was recently featured in the Alliance 20 Stories of Impact to honor their twenty-year anniversary, as well as just to highlight some of our usage for our conference rooms, which is each month we are hosting Life Skills and Community Housing Network uses our facility quite often. Also, wanted to highlight, I think Kara is going to be passing something around. We are working on various fact sheets and information to provide to the board with some updates in terms of our provider equity funding model, and as well as some of our transitions with our transportation service and self-determination, fiscal, financial management services transitions. So, just some information to provide to the board on those fact sheets. Our customer services team also has this information, and we are just referring individuals to our customer services team to ensure that they are answering the questions and that there's consistency in the responses in terms of those questions, so you'll be getting that information momentarily. Also, wanted to highlight our advocacy plans, especially as it relates to direct support professionals. We do have an advocacy work plan that we continue to work from. We actually partner really closely with CM, Community Mental Health Association, as well as our legislative consultants and other partners. And that conversation is ongoing with open lines of communication, and in terms of connecting with our legislators, as you know, it's election year, so there might be some changeover with our legislators. So, we'll continue that advocacy effort as new legislators come in in the new year. We'll be, you know, ramping that up as new legislators come in. But also, Alan Bolter is scheduled to come in the next little while, in the next few months, he'll be speaking to the board and giving some information about the initiatives that are coming up. That is all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Young?
So, on the advocacy, I mean, there was the Town Hall meeting, there was a lot of energy generated, there were a lot of local officials, both county and state house, that became very concerned. Where are we with that right now? Is that managed? Is that hidden? It was too noisy to not talk about it at the board level. I mean, all of us got approached by our elected officials about what's going on, so Christine, you're going to address?
We were in communication with the legislators. There were a few that had contacted us. Actually, Dana and I just received some emails thanking us for our response, so some of the dialogue is really generated around a statewide understanding of ongoing advocacy, budget restrictions, and that we'll be looking into the language that we used last year, which was successful, which messages were not successful, but we did respond to all of those inquiries, and then we received a positive response thanking us. And we did encourage our legislators to contact us with all concerns. Of course, we cannot confirm or deny if we are serving people or what we're delivering individually, but that we will give them scenarios in which OCHN standard protocols and processes are in place. and processes are in place, just to build that level of comfort and trust.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comment?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Pastor Jones.
Okay. I'd like to go back to National Suicide Prevention Month and the idea we're going to have something focusing on that. And I'm wondering if there are numbers that we could display in relation to the suicide rate among the top, we're among the top nine leading causes of death. And even though it gives an age record, we know that among the youth, there's a lot of suicide rate in relation, a lot of it may be attributed to drug use and what have you, vaping and all of that, along with a bunch of other things. And I'm just wondering, to heighten the awareness of that, can we do something with numbers versus just the top nine? Okay? Don't know. And I remember last month, I think it was last month, may have been the month before, we talked about how we track it, and the number I mentioned I thought was low in relation to what numbers we had. Part of that, this came from the medical director, and so those were the numbers we were running with. But it is a big issue. It is a big issue. You know, we're fighting it every day in the schools and what have you. So I'm just wondering if we can heighten the awareness by talking about a number. As an example, if we're in the top nine, you know what? That's, I use all these funny numbers, but 456,722, you know, what does that mean? So if we could do something on that, and I think that maybe we can get a little bit more focus on it, and maybe offer maybe some other solutions, so.
So interestingly, we just, and this might be helpful, when we do look at the CDC and we work closely with the Health Division, but late last week, we just received a national report from Mental Health America. It came in, I think, on Thursday or Friday, so we shared it around and asked people to look at it. And it gets really down to what you're talking about, those granular data sets in terms of age percentages, specific nationally, but it also addresses need in Michigan, where we're doing well, where we need some improvements. So we will be able to get those data sets to you.
Okay, yeah, because I think it would really help us a lot, and I know, I'm learning more about numbers since Frances is working with me. She's still, probably, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you.
Ms. Woodruff? We did miss one item under policy. I don't know if Ms. O'Dowd is able to speak to it, or if we'll need to wait for Vicky, but for the appointment for the RRC Appeals Committee. I believe we had a board member, Mr. Landsman, was on that committee, so we need to appoint another board member for that.
She's still on the line. When does, when does that committee meet?
This is the NG. Oh, sorry. I'm still here, but I'm not aware of who needs to be appointed to that, so that may have to wait for Vicky. The Appeals Committee generally meets when there is an actual appeal.
Okay. Thank you.
And Ms. Woodruff, I can actually speak to that. We are required to have two board members on the Appeals Committee. I am the other board member.
Okay.
It meets on an as-needed basis, and we, Ms. Suter contacts a subsection of the Appeals Committee and reviews the case that wants to be appealed, and then with a sufficient blessing of that segment of the Appeals Committee, a meeting is scheduled. We get materials in advance. I would say generally, no more than four meetings per year, and they're relatively short. The discussions are always fact-based and to the point. But yes, I would definitely encourage anyone who's interested to thoughtfully consider joining the Appeals Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Furman. So would you like for me to ask for recommendations now or move it to the next? Is there any recommendation for someone to join the Appeals Committee? I think we have one nomination on the floor.
I'll support that.
Okay. Ms. Root is the nominee. Any other that are interested? I guess we'll close that nomination. Right. So can we just do a voice vote? All those in favor of Ms. Root representing on the Appeals Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Well, the ayes have it. Thank you. We have now come down to the second opportunity for public comment. I see a hand in the back. Thank you. You will have three minutes for public comment.
Well, thank you so much. My name is Matthew Fredson. I'm an individual served by Issa Seals-Mark. And you guys are doing some really numbers on transportation, and I'm here to speak about that today. Our problem is that right now is my van is paid by a stipend from Issa Seals-Mark to cover my van. It adds to cover the gas, the maintenance, and all the other fun stuff that you need to have for the van. It is a handicap van, so it's hard because I don't walk. I can't just get into another vehicle. You guys want to switch it over to a mile, per mile, and my provider's already told me that they cannot afford to keep that van if you guys switch it per mile. So I would be effectively losing my vehicle that I need to get around to do grocery shopping, to do doctor's appointments, just to get into the community, to do the stuff that I need to do. And this is not what I don't think you guys had planned to happen, but this is what's happening to me and hundreds of thousands of other people that are in the same kind of boat that I'm in. So I just urge you guys, please, please, please reconsider this before it's too late. And you guys are making it very tough for people with the development of disabilities to get around. And before you say, well, what about public transportation? If you miss your bus, they'll leave you there and you will be stranded. So also, you know, there's a fund, you know, you have to pay to get on the bus to do things. So you're really making it already, our money's already tight as it is, so now you're even making it even tighter by making us pay to go with a bus just to go grocery shopping. And how am I going to get the groceries onto the bus and off the bus? Because we're not going to have anybody to help us. So please, I hope you guys reconsider this. Thank you.
We thank you for your comments, and you will hear from customer service. Thank you. Anybody online?
If you are online and wish to speak to public comment, please raise your hand at this time.
We'll close public comment, and we're now down to board members' comments. We'll start with Dr. Hans. Ms. Root. Pastor Jones.
No, that's just thank everybody for the reports you gave today. Thank you very much.
Mr. Young? Mr. Collins?
I'll pass.
Ms. Newman?
No comments.
Mr. Torres?
No comments.
Mr. Furman?
I would like to thank Mr. Fredson for his comments and bringing that situation to our attention. And I'd also like to welcome Christina to the Appeals Committee, and I know this information is a bit late in coming also, but the meetings are virtual as well, so welcome.
All right. And I'd like to thank those who presented tonight, and if there are no further comments, we will stand adjourned.